20th, 2020. Because of the, due to COVID-19 outbreak and an emergency order issued by the province restricting meetings to five people or less, this will be a virtual meeting through the auspices of Microsoft Teams. It will be broadcast on Rogers TV, Channel 53, or via the Rogers link on Midland.ca website. So I'll call this meeting to order, and I'd like to read the traditional land acknowledgement. The town of Midland recognizes it is located on land which is the traditional treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people, now known as the Chipewa Tri-council, comprised of Wasley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. The territory, this territory rather, is within pre-confederation Treaty 5 and Treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land which is the traditional territory of the Huron-Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. With that, I'm going to skip the introductory remarks, since I'm the only one in the chamber, and ask that we stand for a moment of silent reflection, perhaps consider the lives lost through the snowbirds out in B.C. If that is... Thank you very much. At this point, I'll ask if there are any declarations of conflict of interest. Hearing none. Long to approval of the agenda. First, I'd just like to mention to the folks at home that Councilor Oshavsky had an emergency this evening and won't be with us for the rest of the evening. So I have a motion moved by Councilor Gordon, seconded by Councilor Cunningham, that the contents of the council agenda of May 20th, 2020, be approved as amended. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll on that?
Okay, so you've heard the question. When I call your name, please answer yes or no. Councilor Post.
Yes.
Councilor Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilor McGinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross.
In favor.
Councilor Gordon.
Yes.
Councilor Downer.
In favor.
Councilor May.
In favor.
And Mayor Strathern.
Yes.
And the motion is carried.
Thank you. Next, we have a motion moved by Councilor May, seconded by Councilor McGinn. That the items and related recommendations contained within the May 20, 2020 consent agenda as consent items, having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of PL-2020-18, Plan of Subdivision Application Number MD-T-0219, Zoning Bylaw Amendment ZBA-06-19, applicant Raz Can Industries Limited, 319 Gervais Street, which will be considered under Section 15, reports and other items withdrawn from consent agenda with councilor's consideration or council's consideration, for your pardon. Comments or questions from council?
I had a comment if I could.
Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just looking for a bit of clarity. If I could, I know that the community grant program is in there, and we're spending $58,000 plus dollars, and the world indeed has changed. And a lot of these are, you know, volunteer groups, and I just wanted reassurance from the committee that indeed, these are programs that will be going forward in 2020. And secondly, that they are still in need of this, of the fund, you know, $58,000. It's not our money, it's the residents of Midland, and any bit we could save, you know, I would never surprise anybody to say that I want to save money. And I just want to be reassured by the committee, if I could, that indeed, all these would be going forward in 2020.
Maybe I can pass that to Chair Gordon. He's the chair of the committee.
Well, thanks for those comments, Deputy Mayor. They're well-found and well-placed, and I spoke to you, as well as other people, before we had our meeting, and these concerns were echoed by several people in the community. So one of the things the committee did was actually adjourn on its first meeting and task town staff with following up with the top applicants, so the ones that scored the highest on the matrix. If, in fact, they actually were awarded the cash, would they actually be able to deliver their program as they pitched and as they, you know, planned on doing before things fell apart? And we got a mixed response back. Some people said that, no, they wouldn't be able to move ahead, other people weren't sure, and other ones were adamant that, yes, their programming would benefit from this, and they had alternate places, alternate plans in places. So armed with the results of that follow-up, we reconvened, and I think that's actually something people can watch online as well. And we went through that matrix and shuffled things around. A couple people that didn't make it in the first cut slid into space as a result of the shuffling, and it looks like these programs are going to be able to proceed. And we have the commitment from all of the recipients that should there be an issue where they can't proceed, that they would return the money. I believe that's what we discussed, but from the looks of it, the ones that are able to pull it off are going to be able to, and they wouldn't be able to do without our financial support. And really, to try and keep some sense of normalcy in the world when it's turned upside down like this, and to have these programs that are all really deserving good programs running, and the meager funding that they are requesting from us, from the pool that we'd set aside for these purposes, I think serves us all well. And we did look carefully, to your point, Deputy Mayor, at the requests, and make sure we did our due diligence and made the request of the applicants to make sure the money wasn't just, you know, just dispensed without any oversight, kind of like what we're seeing with other emergency measures in the country right now.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. I did have another comment if I could, Your Worship, but I'll allow, if anyone else has any comments with regards to community grant, that'd be fantastic. But I appreciate the update, and I greatly appreciate the opportunity that if they do not go forward, then that money will be used for the previous year, and they wouldn't be coming back, or et cetera. So I appreciate that, Councilor Gordon, and thank you to the committee.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you, Councilor Gordon. Any other comments from council on the, and within the consent agenda? Councilor Gordon. See your hand up there.
You're on mute. Councilor Gordon, you're on mute.
Now he's frozen.
Are you there, Counselor?
Yes.
If you wanted to speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Okay, sorry for that. Yeah, it froze up for a second. I just wanted to speak to the creative way we're going to be funding some of the big dig, the King Street reconstruction. And, you know, it is, it's a creative way of lending ourselves money from that, from that fund, from the MPUC. I imagine it's probably going to use all of the funds that are in that stream. And of course, that was hopefully going to be a source of funding for the splash pad, but one of the projects we've deferred. So I guess, for the people that follow along and look at that, and I've had some people comment, obviously, to me, saying, you know, well, there goes the splash pad money.
You're on mute again, Counselor. There you go.
How far did I get before I muted myself?
There goes the splash pad money.
All right, well, that's probably really the end of it anyway. So the concerns were, you know, there it goes. So sure enough, there's needs and wants and priorities, and as much as I'm a champion for the splash pad, and I'm sure that things will settle down, we'll be able to have these recreational assets back, you know, in front of us as things we can use in society, that's not going to happen overnight and likely won't happen this year. So spending this money and lending it to ourselves, making good use of it to finish the big dig and get the King Street rejuvenation done and back in tip-top shape is really a good thing. So I do support this concept, and I'm confident that we'll find another creative way of funding the splash pad, you know, much the way we'd already discussed, through community contributions, as well as some taxpayer money kicked in from somehow to make this happen. But again, it's going to have to go back into the pot with everything else, all of our other needs and wants. So the people that express those concerns to me, I get it. I'm sure the rest of council does, too. These are unprecedented times, and if we have ways to finance infrastructure that we really urgently do need, and it's already underway, then it is what it is. And we'll revisit splash pad and other recreational assets when the time's right, and I'll try and find a commitment pledge to finding some creative ways to fund it so that it becomes a reality once again. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Mr. Jeremy's on, and my understanding is that this funding is only being consumed until such time as we get debenture issued through the province. But Mr. Jeremy, could you speak to that just briefly, please?
Your Worship, that's correct. The intention with the community-wide benefit reserve is to only use this as construction financing. And what that means is that we will, we will use the funds available from the community-wide benefit reserve until such time as the project approaches substantial completion, at which time we would seek to come back to council for authorization to issue debenture, likely through Infrastructure Ontario, to bring those funds back into the, back into the town and replenish the community-wide, community-wide benefits reserve balance.
Thank you, Jeremy. I see Councilor McGinn.
I wanted to briefly make comments on, on the North Simcoe Family Health Team's request for funding, and how absolutely fantastic this is. I'm really excited about what they're putting forward and about it being implemented. And further to that, I mean, not only just having, not only just having, you know, a solution in place relatively soon, but one that actually builds on a long-term solution where, you know, where if the doctor decides that they want to open a practice here, that they, they're already going to have a clientele base. We need this in our community, and for us to commit in the manner that we have to commit to this is, it's well-needed. So this, I wholly support. And for the North Simcoe Family Health Team to think creatively and to, and to start embracing some of the, of the interesting ways of people via the internet getting healthcare, but having a person present, like having that nurse present. So they've found, they've found a way to make it so that it's still personable, and it's still the appropriate level of care. I was really happy to read that and just wanted to make that comment that I think is absolutely amazing, and the way it's going to be funded, because reading through it, it's true. It's not something that we're typically asked for. We don't have something set up specifically for healthcare. So kudos to the team for finding the way to word it, finding the way to make it something that is possible, and really looking forward to the growth. And it's, it's just, it's remarkable for them to get into their location, the way the growth can happen. It's good for the business, it's good for our community, it's good for the people.
Thank you, Counselor. I think you'll find that, I have an article that's either CTV or Global expounding the virtues of virtual physicians and a massive uptake in this whole program. So I'll circulate that to the rest of council now that we're, once we're finished this meeting, tomorrow sometime. I see Councilor May.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I see Councilor May, and then Deputy Mayor Ross. Councilor May.
Thank you, Your Worship. Just on the items on the consent agenda, yeah, thanks, thanks for the clarification from Mr. Jeremy about the internal loan. This time next year, a lot of the construction funds will probably be restored, and we'll be meeting again to figure out what to do with the construction funds. But I just wanted to speak briefly to the Community Safety and Well-being Plan. That's a great initiative that's underway, and it's great to see a collaboration between North Simcoe, and it's great for the county to be taking the lead on that. It was just a point of a clarification or question about, is it mostly going to be on community safety, or is it going to be, you know, a little bit on community well-being? Because I know that's a thing that we've always tried to prioritize and focus on, is livability, quality of life initiatives. Obviously, that goes in hand-in-hand with a safe, safe community. So it would just be interesting to see how that unfolds and how they scope that project. But that's going to be a great initiative to watch for, so I guess we'll just have to see. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I would point out that the three areas, which are affordable housing, education, and substance misuse, are all in the environmental factors that contribute to pushing people towards, you read, there's three concentric circles or four, three concentric circles and a center, the center being interdiction or intervention by criminal, people in the criminal justice system. So those three factors really are about livability in the community, and how they drill down, and how you're going to keep people from actually having to have an encounter with the criminal justice system. So I appreciate your comments, and the community safety aspect is really trying to rule in the well-being and the livability, but those things that are really, at this point, focusing on those things that are driving people into that intersection with the criminal justice system, that's what we're trying to avoid.
Yeah, thank, thank you so much. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Worship. I did want to touch on the family, North Simcoe Family Health Team request for funding. A couple questions if I could, one being the $10,000 for a one-time pilot program. Is this in addition to the $58,000? I presume it is, so it puts us up to $68,000. And my biggest concern, I don't have an issue with virtual doctor, I think it's fantastic, but this is a download from the province. Province takes care of healthcare. And we better watch what we wish for. We're funding $10,000 today, and it won't be long, the province, and I would say we'd fight back on this one. I know I'm not going to get the support, but I would say that it's a province, it's a provincial healthcare, the province of Ontario, not the town of Midland. And I would suggest that we fought, fight back. I know Penetang and our other, and Tiny and Tay and Wasley First Nation will put in the $10,000, but I wish we had had the opportunity to get together as a five communities and reached out to our provincial partners and said, like, see if they could fund this. Because in my eyes, healthcare has always been a provincial item, and this should be no different.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I just would point out that this originally came up during a physician recruitment program meeting back in January, and it was in response to the inability, first of all, retirements from existing physicians within the community, which stranded approximately 7,000 patients, residents in the broader community. There are physicians, through the physician recruitment program, are scheduled to come to Midland. The pandemic clearly has sort of put that on hold. They were, but they weren't really scheduled to come to Midland until August, September. So that remains to be seen, just when exactly they'll arrive. In the meantime, we examined ways to bring people into the hospital, at least the hospital did, on a sort of a clinic basis. It just wasn't going to work, and the family health team proposed a virtual private network. They'd been looking into it. This is one-time funding, was discussed amongst a number of the communities. That's the only way that they participate. And as you saw in the report, the family health team people are going to the province for funding to continue the program. So we'll have a best of both worlds in a way. We're able to access doctors. The other thing that's happening is that people do not want to move to smaller communities, if family, family health practice seems to be different. So this may be a way of finding a workaround to that. I would suggest to you that Mr. Gravel is still working tirelessly to bring physicians into the community. But this is a way of sort of ameliorating the problem in the moment. I don't disagree that funding is a, sorry, health funding is a provincial mandate, but here, I think we have, to move that, to move that mountain would take some time, and we have an opportunity here to actually provide some, first of all, I think, relief to our existing physicians who are responding to the pandemic and issues arising from it, but secondly, for residents who continue to have needs that need to be met on a regular basis, pandemic or not. So I appreciate your comments. I personally support this whole argument. I suspect that you find your colleagues will, too.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the observations. Any further comments on the agenda before, the consent agenda, before I call a motion? Seeing none, Madam?
Your Worship, just a quick...
Sorry?
Sorry, just, oh, never mind. Answer me. I was just going to say that Rogers is having an encoder problem, and this is not streaming to the public. And so we are recording this, so I was just, I messaged the clerk on the sidebar there, if she can upload this to YouTube after, because people are not able to see us on Rogers TV right now.
Thank you, Counselor. Madam Clerk, I'm sure you'll find some accommodation there.
Yeah, we will work it out.
Thank you. So I'd ask you to call a roll on the motion, read the consent agenda.
Okay. Councilor Post.
Yes.
Councilor Cunningham.
Yes.
Councilor McGinn.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross. Deputy Mayor Ross.
I'm sorry, in favor.
Councilor Gordon.
In favor.
Councilor Downer.
In favor.
Councilor May.
In favor.
And Mayor Strathern.
In favor.
And the motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next motion I have before me is moved by Councilor Downer and seconded by Councilor Gordon. The council resolved into committee of the whole. Comments or questions from council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll?
Okay. Councilor Cunningham.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross.
In favor.
Councilor McGinn.
Yes.
Councilor Post.
Yes.
Councilor May.
Yes, in favor.
Councilor Gordon.
In favor, and it's streaming again.
Councilor Downer.
In favor.
And Mayor Strathern.
In favor.
And that motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, for those who, people joining us by Roger streaming. We've just moved into committee of the whole, and I'll turn it over to Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you, Worship. We're now in the committee of the whole at, for April 20th, sorry, our May 20th meeting. Presentations, we have none. Deputations and petitions, once again, we have none. And public meetings and hearings, there are none also. Now, there's a couple of things that were withdrawn from the consent agenda, 10-1 being the 30-day plan and COVID, sorry, 30-day plan and COVID-19, and our Mr. CEO will give us a verbal update. Mr. CEO, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, and thank you, the rest of council, and Your Worship, for your indulgence, and I can't believe it's been 30 days, and I've enjoyed certainly all my time here in Midland. I wanted to give you just a brief update in terms of what's been happening with the COVID situation, and then touch briefly again on my 30-day plan, which I had committed. I would give you an update at each of those 30-day stages. So to start with COVID, as you all know, and as everyone knows, there was no playbook given to anyone on this situation, but I will say that I'm very pleased with the anticipation of the municipal team that I've seen. When you see the actions that were taken on King Street, as an example, to do that work safely, when you see the work that's done to keep our rec facility in top-notch shape in terms of some of the refurbishing being done there, the care that we had with the waterfront to make sure we were positioned to quickly launch our boat launch, those types of decisions, to me, I think are indicative of the good planning that's gone in part to making sure we're being responsive. Of course, everything that guides our decisions is done with the safety of the public in mind, and certainly the safety of our staff. We can't do this, though, without the feedback that we're receiving from you as council. That's really important, certainly, to understand about the impacts that this is having on the community, and you've been very good with the feedback you've been giving us in terms of some of the actions we're considering or have taken. And certainly, we, we want to be responsive to those. We're using the guidance of the chief medical officer and our county colleagues as well, certainly when we're looking at a lot of this, because as the provincial framework and regulation guidance breaks, there's certainly a great amount of interpretation that needs to go on in some of those announcements. There's typically a few days lag before we get some of the specifics on the details, so it takes us a little time to understand that. But with the strength of having that community around us and sharing that interpretation, I think we're getting it right most of the time. Now, we're not perfect, and, you know, I think we will certainly admit to that, but I think we're doing a good job at trying to be cautious, but also responsive to the public. But I do thank you for all the feedback that you're giving to, certainly to me, and to our staff, to help us be responsive. So, I mean, that's what's going on with COVID-19 here at the municipality. We're actually preparing for what the new normal will look like, whatever that may be, but anticipating how we're going to have to change our workplace and how we work so that we can serve the public and serve them safely. So a lot of that planning is going on right now, and I'd say we're one of the leaders, certainly, in, you know, leading that type of work. So that's in terms of COVID-19. In terms of my 30-day update, if you remember the plan that I presented you at the start of my tenure, the first 30 days was called the discover phase, as I like to call it. It's a phase of really listening and understanding what's going on with the organization, but also listening to the community, and certainly sharing, sharing my perspective and my experience. And it's been a wonderful experience, certainly, from that perspective. Thanks to all of you, I was able to spend some time with each of you individually, and certainly get a much better appreciation of Midland and the fantastic opportunities we have here, but also some of the challenges as well. Certainly, I think there's a tremendous amount more of opportunity that we have in front of us, but certainly, there's a new normal that we're all going to have to deal with, and there is certainly concern, I think, within the community in how we're going to adapt to that. What I am impressed with, though, is certainly the care and sensitivity of everyone, including council, is taking on the decisions that we have to make. I think we're being very, very prudent and responsible in how we're looking at things, but I also think we're being very creative and innovative in some of the things we're doing. Those, to me, are all characteristics of a good organization that can effect the change that's required. So certainly, for me, it's been a wonderful start, and I certainly look forward to engaging more with the community as I take on the next phase. And the next phase of my 100-day plan is really to get a lot more deep into some of the, the issues that we're dealing with, a lot deeper in some of the big projects that we're leading, and start to get my, my sense of where we might need to make some adjustments with that. I'm also very pleased that we are able to recruit the new executive director for, for our leadership team, or we're able to secure a fantastic talent there as well. So we're rounding out a team that I think will, will serve you well and serve the community well, and as I said, I look forward to working with all of you. Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. That's the end of my update.
Thank you very much. Well, well said. Greatly appreciated. Now, we have the, the verbal report provided by CEO, I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your last name. I want to make sure I'm pronouncing your last name properly. Could you help us?
It's like the car Renault with a D.
Denault. Perfect. Thank you.
There you go.
Mr. Denault regarding the thirty day plan and COVID nineteen be received of information? I need a mover and a seconder and I'm going by my list. So it'll be moved by councillor Gordon. Are you fine with that?
Affirmative.
And second by councillor Downer.
Very good.
Wonderful. Do we have any questions or comments for Mr. Denault?
I've got a couple, but councillor, councillor May's bigger went up before mine.
All right, he beat you to it. Councillor May, then councillor Gordon, and if we have any others.
Thank you. Well, just in terms of COVID, I just think it's a really good point in this emergency, you know, that we're in to just remind everyone that we are halfway through the battle and that we really have to still, you know, adhere to all the social distancing, physical distancing. We're nearing the very tragic mark of two thousand deaths in Ontario alone with the projections of that number almost being twice as much when this first outbreak, the dust settles. So I know there's a huge emphasis on getting outside and being together with friends and families when it's beautiful out. We're just still trying to remind everyone adhere to the health unit. Stay tuned to the news, see what the new changing rules are. But you know, just we really need to hold the line and I think that's an important message. Because you're starting to see mobility, people are starting to congregate, to gather. And I think that this is a really good reminder that nobody's safe until everybody's safe. So I just wanted to take that brief moment. Thank you, your worship. Thank you, Deputy.
Thank you, councillor May. Councillor Gordon?
Thank you. So there's, there's no other way to sugarcoat it. I mean, we're opening up and there's going to be another wave and a lot more people are going to die. And that's the way it is. People are tired of being locked down. They feel like they don't know anybody that's got COVID or died of COVID. So the mentality is let's let her rip. It's summertime. We got this beat and that's very naive thinking. You know, I, I'm not a doctor, obviously, and I don't have any medical training, but I follow the news like anybody else. And with a realist lens on, you know, we are, I don't even think we're halfway through this. So the reality is we're doing what we can. I've always been a proponent of let's do what's legal. And let's make sure that, you know, if there's something we're allowed to do and we're asked not to, then it's the honor system. If there's something we're not allowed to do, then let's not do it because it's against the law or against a regulation. And so this is, you know, brought a lot of people contacting me, I'm sure with the rest of council about, well, why is this closed or how come this is open? Or, you know, when are we going to get this open? It started with the boat launch ramp, you know, and I still get questions about the parking lot at the bottom of William Street for Midland Bay Landing. People want to park there and fish because fishing was one of the first things that the province opened up. And I've been having dialogues with our new CEO about this and he's been very responsive. Relayed people's concerns about like Little Lake Park Road not being open and not having access to the fried place and you know, there's a case to be made for all of these. But at the end of the day, I have faith and I'm asking the people that are watching us and living in the community have faith that nobody's taken a position of closing stuff down or leaving it closed arbitrarily. It is being well thought out. The risks are being weighed out. The discussions are happening, happening about, you know, is this worth keeping closed? Is this worth opening? And the decisions are getting made and they're being made thoughtfully and carefully. And are we as a collective in the municipality going to get it all right? A hundred percent of the time? Absolutely not. You know, to our CEO's credit, you know, he's doing everything he can. He's brand new. Welcome aboard, right in the middle of the pandemic. And oh yeah, by the way, everything here is new and in flux and you get a higher new senior team and we're all new to you. So I really need to commend our staff, the way they've been managing, working remotely, dealing with new personalities, new faces, all the normal, you know, things that go along with people being afraid and upset and losing their livelihood and, you know, some people going bankrupt and some people aren't going to survive this and there are people dying. So all of that bag of ugliness can be countered with the fact that there is hope and that this will end. And the things that are, you're not able to access that are closed right now will be opened when it's safe to do so. And don't think for a second that council and staff are not always thinking about this and are always talking about this and emailing and having conversations and wanting to do this when it's safe to do so. So I just, I want to echo the point that this is an ongoing struggle and that the weather's great, you can get outside. We do have a lot more freedoms, but we have a long way to go. And we're still working on some of the things that seem like no brainers. Why is this not open? There's, there's good reasoning why there isn't and we, we can watch in the days to come for, you know, that things to be relaxed a bit more. So I do appreciate that. Thank you for the update. And to the folks that are following along, rest assured that your concerns are being brought forward to council and senior, senior management. And we're doing everything we can at a pace that seems safe and reasonable.
Thank you, councillor Gordon, and thank you, councillor May. Councillor McGinn?
So councillor Gordon went where I was, where I was hoping to go, which was that there's a lot of us who are afraid. Most of us have some, some sense of fear because there's, you don't know whether you know, if you have it, you don't know that you're going to have it right away and there is a delay. So there's a fear that is there. And you know, when you're, when you have a mass group of people who are afraid, we tend to lose some of our reasonable judgment. So it's important to have, to consider high word that reasonable, a reasonable person is capable of questioning and capable of going through certain processes to ensure that they have the best outcome or best practices. I think at the end of this, we're all going to have learned something new. We're all going to have a different view on areas and ways that we can conduct business differently. It's fair to say that when things were closed in Midland, sometimes it was overreaching. Little lake, the road, closing the road. It was easier, and I understand, it was easier to close the road than it was to cordon off that Long Beach area to ensure that the boat ran, boat, boat launched down there wasn't, wasn't being used. It was easier to do and there was an awful lot to do. So I'm saying that I, I understand that we have to find it in ourselves to recognize that at that time in, in, in space and place, the best choice was probably me at that time. So we have to live and we have to learn and we have to realize, you know, what are the implications of some of the choices that we made? And I believe that we're capable of doing that. And I believe that we're capable of communicating and saying, you know, here are the things that we did right. Here are the things we could have done better and let's try not to have hard thoughts or a hard heart about it. As for COVID, I can't say that there's only going to be a second wave. There could be a second. There could be a third wave. We here in Ontario have some things that we can model. We here in Simcoe have some things and other places that we can model. But to make a prediction and say there's only, you know, another wave? You don't really know. It comes down, you cannot get the human element and nail that down. So I don't want to be saying there is only a second wave. And I'm certain on this. Once we get through and we actually are at the end of COVID, there are going to be other effects in our community. There's going to be psychological effects. There is going to be emotional effects. So if we take where we are right now and consider how we're responding to our community, maybe we can have the mindset to be ready after when other folks who now have the capacity and the ability to grieve or are suffering in a multitude of different ways. I think we're at a place right now where if we think about this right and we are unified, we're going to be a whole lot stronger as a community.
Thank you, councillor McGinn. Thank you, councillor McGinn. Any other questions or comments? I see none.
Deputy Mayor, sorry, one, one last quick little note. We, we didn't really talk about it earlier, but it goes along with COVID. It's the fact that this is happening. You know, we're doing video council meetings and now there's a plan in place to allow the public to participate. So we can have our public meetings and deputations electronically. You know, that was thrown together, you know, quickly by our senior team. And the, this report that was, you know, what's, what's already gone through here, but on our consent agenda is well put out. And it just makes sense. So to the people that feel they're disconnected from their municipality and this, you know, on top of all the other inconveniences to go along with the global pandemic, they aren't able to access the normal things of communicating with council and coming before us and talking about things and airing their issues and talking about things they're happy about. They can do that now or they will be able to when we're done today. So, you know, another kudo, I mean, there's good things coming out of this, this bad thing. And that maybe is the one little takeaway for today that put a smile on your face.
Thank you very, thank you very much. And I know a lot of this talk has been about our COVID nineteen and, but we also had our CEO just completed his first thirty days. And I want to say they were fantastic first thirty days. And I want to thank you very much for the hard work and leadership that you've shown to not only our council, but staff and the people in Midland. So thank you very much for your hard, hard work. It cannot be easy getting thrown into this at, at the time that you did. But I for one, and I speak for, I hope everyone that greatly appreciate everything you've done. And of course, everybody else, all the staff in the town of Midland have been outstanding. I cannot say enough about what a great job they've done. So thank you very much. So we will need to vote on this. Moved by councillor Gordon, seconded by councillor Downer. And I see no more questions or comments. Madam clerk, if you could call the roll, please.
Yes, I can. Okay, so you've heard the question. Yes or no? Councillor Cunningham?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor, in favor.
Councillor McGinn?
Yes.
Councillor Post?
Yes.
Councillor May?
In favor.
Councillor Gordon?
In favor.
Councillor Downer?
In favor.
And Mayor Strether?
In favor.
And that motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you very much. The next item that was withdrawn from our consent agenda is PL two thousand and twenty dash eighteen, a plan of subdivision application number MDT zero two one nine zoning bylaw amendment ZBA zero six nineteen application can, sorry, Ross can phrase, phrase can, RAS can limited for three nineteen Gervais Street. That report PL two thousand and twenty dash eighteen plan of subdivision application number MD dash T zero two one nine and zoning bylaw amendment application number ZBA zero six one nine applicant Ras can limited two thousand, sorry, three nineteen Gervais Street dated May twentieth two thousand and twenty be received and that the draft plan of subdivision application number MDT zero two one nine and zoning bylaw amendment application number ZBA zero six one nine respecting the lands at three nineteen Gervais Street be approved as amended as set out in staff report PL two thousand and twenty dash eighteen dated May twentieth two thousand and twenty. That council direct staff to prepare the conditions of draft approval and that they be presented to council for approval. And that the executive director of community and development service be authorized to approve the draft plan of subdivision being attachment number four to staff report PL two twenty 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 dash eighteen. And that council deems the changes to the development and the proposed rezoning in response to the public input and comments be minor in nature pursuant to section thirty dash seventeen of the planning act. And as such, no further public meeting is required. And the council passed impending bylaw, sorry, impending zoning bylaw to rezone the property in accordance with staff report PL twenty twenty dash eighteen being bylaw twenty twenty dash thirty two. I know I need a mover and a seconder. I believe next up is moved by councillor May. You approve, you approved councillor May? And second by councillor McGinn. Councillor May, would you second this motion?
Yes.
We are now on the floor. Any questions or comments? Councillor May?
Thank you. I have quite a bit to say, so I'll try to be brief and concise. Very exciting to see this development move forward. For me, it's just a bit of a, you know, question marks about, are we, is this a missed opportunity? Are we wasting potential of this development site? So reading over the reports on this, this is the compromise that the developer and the town staff have for the layout. I still have some concerns with the layout. You know, it's kind of an unconventional design, the cul-de-sac design. So that was the one question for staff, engineering and planning staff about, is this the ideal layout and configuration for this property? Because it, we're basically wasting a lot of, of the prime site, the middle, you know, heart and soul of the site for a cul-de-sac and a lot of parking, a lot of storage of cars, you know, you know, side yard setbacks, front yard setbacks. That's, we're gobbling up the site and it seems to be we're wasting some of the space. And the, the design of the cul-de-sac increases the cost of the municipality. Although it's minor in comparison to this development, it will, you know, we'll have to repair it years and years and it's a cost that will be on us. It also would have been nice to see a natural barrier buffer between this development and either the one side with the neighborhood or the other side with the apartments or even the garden gallery to the south. But it really comes down to compact and dense design. And so that's the thing with the PPS, the provincial planning statement and our new official plan, which has yet to be adopted. It really tries to hit that sweet spot for density of fifty people and jobs per hectare. And this is a little bit lower density. So this is more of a typical suburban layout with singles and semi-detached. So what the PPS states and what our new official plan is pointing towards is when you have one of these development opportunities, try to add as many units as you can. That's good for the town. It's good for the tax base. There's a term missing middle. It doesn't necessarily have to be a big multi-story apartment building. It just has to be, you know, gentle density, quads, triplexes, small apartment buildings. That would have been great to see that for the site, but these are really kind of what ifs. It's hard to hold this whole process up just because of some theoretical design inputs. So, and the other thing is gentle density is also human scale. By filling this site in with something that's a nice and complimentary to the apartment buildings on one side and the neighborhood on the other side, we'd be able to get the units with the environmental design that we were looking for. Just another quick point on, I know that this site does not have significant natural heritage systems. It's basically a red pine forest that was planted nearly a hundred years ago. I just think that we need to think of that in a different way. And it's basically calculating the value of a natural capital S asset. What is the value of a tree? You know, what is the quantifiable benefit of a woodlot in an urban environment? Air quality, you know, there's mental health benefits, stormwater management. So those things should be kind of taken more into the equation on these infill developments. Certainly not suggesting we rewrite the rules, but it's just a thought that we really need to be adding up all the biomass on the site. And as, as you know, I always say, plant as many trees as you can, save as many trees as you can. But this is a prime site for redevelopment. Just a quick point on taxation and smart growth. One thing people always say about Midland is we have a spending issue. Some people would say that we actually have a taxation issue because we have a high level of quality of service, but we have a low tax base because of our low density. So anytime we have an opportunity to infill like this, we really try to hit that mark on density. So the fifty people per hectare is usually what we're trying to go for. Again, it's not written in law. And I think currently the numbers with about fifteen or so units, we're looking about twenty five. So just gives you an idea about this is about half as dense as what the new standards are going to be expecting of the development community. And it comes down to the concept of highest and best use. Again, we're not developers, so we don't. And it comes down to the concept of highest and best use. Again, we're not developers, so we don't know how to profit. I think this is just coming from a public policy perspective of how we develop and how we make beautiful buildings for people. And I think we should be prioritizing people and nice buildings over cars and parking lots. So there's some interesting deny uh, design dynamics about how this maybe could have been a bit better. Again, this is all essentially a moot point because we're about to pass it and they're gonna. Move forward through the approval process. And finally, just the one point was a lot of these design concepts that I, you know, questions and comments that I had would have been great to insert. And early in the design phase as opposed to at the end, because as we'll hear from Mrs. Zhao. And perhaps even Mr. Campbell, that this has already gone through a bunch of iterations. So a lot of the points that I've raised. Have probably already been considered and dismissed early in this site, in the design stage. So that's why it's really good to have just ongoing engagement. As soon as people know that this development was going to go forward. You start talking about what what should it look like and how uh, how best we can develop. And the fact that we didn't hear much from people, the neighbors on Noreen, it shows that maybe we could have done a little bit better getting the word out. That this development, we wanted to hear more feedback. We didn't have as much feedback as I thought we were going to. I thought the residents of Noreen would probably voice their concerns a little bit loudly. But there's a lot of backstory to this property, so we don't need to get into all the history of this site. But I just wanted to raise some of those design issues about sustainability, sustainable site design. And uh, thank you for allowing me the opportunity to kind of talk on this. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
You're welcome. Did you have a question for our planner at all?
Well, it basically comes down to is, are we all comfortable with this design? Is there any room for a negotiation or compromise about, you know, design changes? Or if everyone's comfortable with that, are we prepared to proceed forward?
Is our planner on board?
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor Ross, I'm here.
Oh, good to see you. Happy to hear your voice. And if you could comment to Council May, that'd be fantastic. Thank you.
Sure, as Councilor May has already mentioned, this design goes through several different versions. This is currently the best version that's agreeable between both staff and the developer. Um, in terms of a completely alternative design, it is what the, it is what the developer is proposing. We cannot impose. Additional density upon them since it is not in our policy. And the current design does bring what is does bring the density higher than what is currently permitted. And in terms of the cul-de-sac, there is an alternative design that's available in the report as an attachment. So in that version of the design, the cul-de-sac is a little bit curved. So in that way, it will it will normalize some of the loss and not have the loss being so pissed. So that's a version that can be considered by council. But then the application will have to be deferred to give staff an opportunity to review that plan. However, if you review the letter that was submitted by the applicant, this design will decrease a number of laws. And will make the development unfeasible for the developer. So I believe it's important to balance both the design of the development. As well as making development feasible. And I believe this is a this is the best compromise we can reach.
Thank you very much. And that's what government's all about is compromise. So I appreciate that. And thank you. Any other questions or comments? I see none. Am I missing anybody? Uh, Madam Clerk, if you could call the vote, please.
Okay, you've heard the question. Members of council, I will now call the Council Prost.
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham?
In favor.
Counselor McGinn?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor.
Counselor Gordon?
In favor, growth paying for growth.
Counselor Downer?
In favor.
Counselor May? Counselor May?
Uh, I guess it passed already, but I'll be in favor. In in favor.
Thank you. And Mayor Strather?
In favor.
And that motion is carried unanimously.
Sorry about that. I quick hit in this mute. Uh, thank you very much, Madam Clerk, and thank you very much to our planner and all our staff. I appreciate it. Next, we have the notice of motion. Does any counselor have a notice of motion to bring forward? I don't see any hands going up. All right, and when now we'll start the announcements. I presume everyone might have an announcement, so I'll start on my list. And first I have Counselor Prost. Counselor Prost? Do you have an announcement to make tonight?
Not tonight, thank you.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you. Have a wonderful evening. Uh, Counselor Cunningham?
Yes, please. I have a few.
All right, please.
So from our seniors council, we do have a consultant engaged who is commencing the process towards developing an age friendly plan. For Midland. So this is going to be a survey that is going to go out to our seniors. It is being prepared and we're hoping to have that rolled out before the end of this month. So we'll be populating that hopefully on the engaging midland.ca website. As well as the seniors council Facebook page. So if you can watch for that, and there'll be other venues that we will be reaching to. Get this out possibly through doctors as well as other places where we may be able to find some of our seniors who don't have any access to the online world. And we, of course, have hired a consultant for the purpose of being able to reach that population. Um, also wanted to mention that a lot of grownups have been calling the kids helpline. I don't know if you saw that in CBC, but this has been. Something of a news item that people with challenges right now going through stress and anxiety have been reaching out, trying to find somewhere. To talk to. So two one one has been proposed as one place, but these CMHA has come out with bounce back Ontario.ca. It's a free guided self-help program that is effective in helping people aged fifteen and up who are experiencing mild to moderate anxiety or depression. Or who may be feeling low or stressed, worried, irritable or angry. They can go to bouncebackontario.ca to access a few of those resources. There's also a spinoff of the kids help phone, which is a text number. I don't have that handy, but it is something that can be found. Uh, not even sure where we'd find that posted at this point in time. So I guess if anybody needs to find that number and can't Google it. You can certainly email me, c cunningham at midland.ca. Also wanted to mention that Simcoe County is trying to keep track of all the businesses that are open and how they are open. And how they're opening back up during the shutdown and after the shutdown. So you can find. A list of some of those businesses, but surely not as many as we'd like to see, because I know there's a lot of businesses open not on the list. At experience dot simcoe.ca. So if you are a business that is open or you know someone who is and you see they're not on that list, get ahold of them. And let them know they can actually reach out to our edcns.ca and they'll connect with Simcoe County for them if they want. So you can go to edcns.ca to connect. Um, nice little segue into the fact that we do have a task force for municipal business recovery through edcns. Through that task force, we host a virtual town hall panel every Thursday. In which we bring in our MP, our MPP, our county warden, our economic development officer, the manager of the Chamber of Commerce. The general manager of North Simcoe Community Futures and sometimes some other guests to fill us in on what's happening during this. Very much of a shifting landscape for our businesses. Uh, this week past, we had Karen Miele come on as well to share about how to experience culture. She was representing the Culture Alliance. That website is culturealliance.ca, nice, easy one to find and remember, where you'll find that we are putting together plans for a shared cooperative. Virtual Canada Day. That is something that is coming up that you can watch for. If you have questions that you would like to have me pose to our MP, MPP, et cetera, you can email them to c cunningham at midland.ca and I'll try to get them in. We keep the program down to one hour. And so as people get their updates in. We usually have about ten minutes at the end that we can fill some questions in. They've had a couple of interesting ones so far. About some of the things falling through the cracks, about some of the ways that we're supporting our students and how businesses can support students. And of course about high speed because we're all feeling the pain there. Another announcement from that task force, you will be able to, as a retailer reopening, request a reopening kit. We'll have a portal up on Monday that will allow you to apply for your own kit that will be subsidized through our edcns.ca. This kit will include checkout line distancing points, one-way aisle signage. Um, sleeves of masks that are actually produced by industrial filter manufacturing. Those signage also local supplier, local supplier for point of sale barriers and install. So if you need that installed, so you can separate your cash from your customers, that is available as well. A enhanced sanitizer also we're looking at from a local supplier. And that whole kit will be picked up by appointment. So if you apply for that on Monday. You could also send an email into sveg@edcns.ca if you want to make sure that you don't forget to check on Monday. And I also wanted to say yay, engaging Midland TV show is coming back. So that's going to be happening June first. We're going to see that on Rogers TV and our Rogers livestream. We will get to hear that update about the King Street rejuvenation and guesting on that. Gail Hunt from the hospital as well as our own counselor, Bill Gordon and Andy Campbell. So really excited to see that. Coming back up so that we can get those back out. And those shows will be available also if you can't see them live on the engaging midland.ca website. So it's nice to see that populating and that is a great source of updates if you're looking to sign up and be reminded when things get added to that site. They don't have to keep checking back every day. That I think is my announcements for this month.
Sure you don't sure nothing else?
I could come up with something.
Counselor Strather, I'm sorry, Mayor Strather.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, as you've heard from some of the counselors this evening. The province is starting to reopen society and the economy. Phase one, the pro- a three-phase approach. We're in phase one. Premier Ford has been very. Uh, I would say assertive in his statement that. Should we fail to continue to socially isolate and proper follow proper hygiene, he will not hesitate to close the economy down again. We've seen an uptick from, according to the medical officer for the province in terms of infections. So I would just again reiterate what counselors have said. To continue to practice rigorously, practice social distancing and hand washing. Respect your felt your neighbor's success and and also. Their sacrifice in terms and being and keeping the curve down. We're particularly fortunate in Midland, but don't be deceived. Potential, the medical officer of health for Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit said just this week, we're not out of the woods yet. Uh, and the probability or possibility of infection is still relatively high. Will there be a second wave? Yes. If we continue to prop to follow the strictures set down by the medical officers of health. Uh, we have a good opportunity to make sure we don't overwhelm the system. Uh, I just also like to say that any announcements with respect to reopening. Town could be found on our website, www.midland.ca, on the COVID update tab. There may be other special tabs that are you'll see there from time to time. And finally, I just like to say to everybody, this has been a tough time for business in Midland, in particular in the downtown where they're experiencing not only. Uh, closures because of the pandemic, but also because of the big dig. Please shop local and please shop, support your downtown merchants. That way they'll be here for you when all the dust settles and all of this. And I don't mean that, no pun intended, with respect to the big dig. So please, please, please support your local businesses. Be well and stay safe. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I greatly appreciate it. Counselor Gordon?
Echo about shopping downtown, uh, and not just downtown, or in their entire, you know, community. Some businesses are, some businesses are being both allowed to open. And I should also say choosing to open because even though some businesses may be allowed to open. For a variety of reasons, they may be choosing not to because they're immunocompromised, they're just way too freaked out about this. They don't have any money to buy stock or whatever. Like, there's a million different reasons why the people that can open may not be able to right now. So for the ones that do and that can open, um, please consider frequenting them. Access is available if you're downtown and to what we have a lot of businesses that aren't downtown too, can't forget about them. And even our, even the guys that aren't locally owned, like the big box stores, they employ our people in in Midland. They employ residents of Midland. And they are gainfully employed and a lot of them have remained open. So I don't want to develop the mindset that, you know, that this is all about the small business and forget about the big ones. We need to support everybody equally in the community right now. And get out and shop and shop local, take precautions, follow the little lines on the floor and the feet. Even if you have to wait in line for something, be patient, wait in line, you know, you don't, doesn't take long on social media to see examples of people behaving badly. The other thing is about communications. I'm really happy to see that public consultations and meetings are going to be able to happen now. Electronically until we can, you know, get back together again physically. Uh, something that Counselor Prost and I put together and started a couple of weeks ago is a stay connected with your counselors video. Meeting. It's like I like this, basically, only it's not an official sanctioned event. It's Counselor Prost, myself and friends, uh, you know, so Counselor McGinn joined us on the last one. And we run those, uh, we're going to do them twice a month if we can. So the next one's May twenty sixth, that's Tuesday night, next Tuesday. At from seven to eight, and you can visit my website or my Facebook site for a link or counselor begins. Facebook for the link to come and join the meeting. It's a Zoom conference. It's free. If you don't have internet, you can call in on your phone. And what we're doing is basically, we're supposed to be listening more than talking. So this is a way to stay connected with us. Uh, bring us your concerns, share your ideas, give your feedback, tell us how, you know, the municipality is doing or not doing. And anything you want us to bring to council on your behalf. It's our way to stay connected with you and feel free. It's just like this with video or not video, whatever you want. So that's next Tuesday, May twenty six, seven to eight online. And then we'll keep announcing them every couple of weeks until we can get back together in person. So just a communication initiative and any of my fellow counselors are invited to join. We just have to be cognizant that as soon as we hit four, we got to stop. Uh, or it becomes a meeting under the municipal act. But first come for a server. If you have a. You know, you just want to come, let me know and we'll we'll put you on and one of us will step away from it. So. Uh, that's opened everybody. This is about staying connected when we can't. And please try stay connected with us and don't think that we're, you know, operating in a vacuum here because we really do care about you and this municipality. And making good decisions and getting us through this pandemic.
Thank you, Counsel Gordon. Uh, next up, Counselor Downer, do you have any dad?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Downer. Uh, Counselor May?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, well, the only thing to add in terms of going to the health unit's website. Uh, one thing which is a little bit lighter is they have fantastic health and wellness resources. That you can get on the Simcoe Muskoka District Health Unit. Uh, they have some great things. My favorite thing is to have a dance party. Uh, so my kids and I have been trying to dance. Trolls two is out, which is a great soundtrack for young parents out there. And get outside, enjoy the sunshine, get lots of vitamin D. That's really good uh, right now. And but if you are outside, I did want to caution people to just make sure you look for ticks. I have never seen one in my life until last week. I found one on my daughter's ear. So they're here and they're in our backyards. So just be cognizant, just be aware. Uh, have a new protocol, uh, take off your mask, check behind your ears for ticks. You know, check all your creepy crawlies. They're they're here. And so I just want to be, make people aware that now that there's more people going out. And also, um, just thanks for everyone giving shout outs to the business improvement in the downtown. A lot of businesses are not opening, even though they're allowed to. So just stay tuned on their websites. Check online, even make phone calls. Lots of curbside pickup available and lots of people are still doing delivery. So. A lot of people downtown have adapted very well and people, their clients have been very supportive. So. Just make sure you check out the downtown website if you need any resources for that. And finally. Uh, just shout out to the community garden. They're now up and running again, following social distancing protocols in Little Lake Park. They're looking for volunteers. They have a wonderful garden down there. So not only is it helping a nice community cause. It's a fantastic recreational therapy activity. And if you can't make it down to the garden, they're now also recommending, you know. Do container guarding if you have mobility issues, if you can get any seeds, of course. Uh, those are hard to come by these days. So. I just want to give a shout out to the community garden and thanks, everyone.
Thank you very much, Counselor May. And Counselor McGinn?
Thank you, yes. Um, I would, it's a completely different genre than anybody else's uh has mentioned. So, um, it's foraging season. And I think it's really important to bring up that, you know, the majority of people who forage uh typically can tell the difference between, you know, a false morrel, a black, a yellow morrel, or false chantrelle. So there's a lot, there is a lot out there that you can't eat. Um, this, there is a segue here into the Severnstown Environmental Association. So when you're out foraging, would you kindly keep your eyes open and watch where you're stepping? Take no more than what you need. Be mindful that you're not going on to, um, you know, that you're not trespassing. And I have to confess that today, I didn't realize that I had crossed too far over and I was in somebody else's property until I came back and went, oh, there's a fence here. Um, so it happens. It was unintentional, and I wasn't actually foraging today. I was just getting a walk like Counselor Maine. It's that, you know, some men, it's good for your mental health. So when you're foraging, if you could please keep your eyes open, and if you see any of the invasive species, and it is on, you can find uh Severnstown Environmental Association on Facebook, on the web. And they actually have a really uh amazing Instagram feed, and there's a, there's a couple of pictures, pictures there. Um, wild mustard. You'd be surprised where that stuff grows. It's almost as prolific as crab grass, and nobody likes crab grass. If you see these species, if you see wild mustard, and if you're seeing the frag mighties, please just let them know so that they know where it is, and we can work with the management, um, management of of the remediation that goes along with it. Um, so be careful where you're foraging. Often, um, I had a book that I would look at, and there's a couple of web references. I'm not going to actually suggest one over another because I'm not particular about one. But please do look, look up mushrooms and learn how to identify, learn first before you put it in your mouth because it could be deadly. Um, happy foraging, happy hunting. You know, go in, be happy, be healthy, don't take more than what you need. And there is the code of not telling where your spots are. I understand that. But let's carry this forward. Let's be a little more community-minded. And uh, there's no reason for people to be going in and then going down to the St. Lawrence Market and uh, you know, not benefiting our community. So let's work towards a, a change in mindset there. I'm really happy about Chigamick, Chigamick, and how um, how everything is moving forward for them. So I suggest people were, you know, go to the website, go to Chigamick's website and see how their build is going, how their move is going. Um, they've had, they've had some fantastic initiatives. They've moved a lot of their services to being um, being online, and that's, that's quite difficult. Um, they had a fantastic traditional healer, a, a young traditional healer. Um, and this person was capable of, of utilizing, you know, what, what, what they grew up learning and what was handed down to them from their ancestors. Um, they're finding innovative ways to, to stay in touch with the community. And that will be all. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that leaves me. I'm gonna have a, just quickly, I wanted to just take the time to thank um all our, not only our great support workers, um, sorry, emergency care workers, but all the support workers, from the bankers to the Tim Horton drive-through attendant, to the grocery store clerk, to all those people that are keeping us fed and taken care of in these very rough times. So uh, you know, we don't take the time to thank those people, but I really do feel that um they deserve a, a thank you. Now, I, a special shout-out. I received some information that there's a group of people called the Georgian Bay COVID Nineteen Sowers. These people got together, I don't want to say they're all ladies, but these people got to all together, fifty of them now, and they've sewed over seventy-five hundred masks. These masks have been given to our old age home Chigamick all through our community. And uh, their goal is to get to ten thousand. They're almost at the eight thousand. But uh, what a group. That only shows you once again what a great community Midland and North Simcoe is, that a group of people would get together and make their mission to make masks for as many people. We're talking eighty thousand, eight thousand masks. That, to me, that is crazy and amazing. And thank you very, very much to the Georgian Bay COVID Nineteen Sowers. Uh, greatly, greatly appreciated and great job and keep up the great work. So, yes.
Sorry, I forgot one thing. My bad. We have, we have a birthday to announce amongst us, and that is Counselor McGinn. He's turning twenty-four again on the twenty-fourth. So I just wanted to uh, wish you a happy birthday. Maybe give you a quick round of, everyone want to join in with me?
Sure. To you. Happy birthday.
Happy birthday.
Happy birthday to you.
Now we get to hear what kind of lag and latency there is on Zoom.
Yeah. Anyway, thank you very much, and happy birthday, Counselor McGinn.
Deputy Mayor Ross, just a quick one uh from the mailbag. Gary, my, my little zipper zapper gets, you know, messages constantly when I'm on these meetings. For Peterson Park Boat Launch Ramp, uh, people that haven't got a renewed pass from the municipality, are they uh still allowed to, you know, launch their boat and park their, their truck? Do we know that? Does anybody have?
I don't have the answer. Maybe our CEO, Mr. CEO, would help, be able to help us out, one of our staff members?
I think Andy, Andy's still on the call. I think Andy giving an update on that.
Mr. Campbell?
Uh, yes, Deputy Mayor and members of council, the passes, uh, we should receive them tomorrow from the printer. If they're not in tomorrow, which early next week, and those will be, uh, we'll put a notice out for people to come in and pick those up so that they, you know, can put those in their cars and be allowed to free parking at the boat launch.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll pass it along right now.
So uh, that ends this committee of hold, so I have a move by Counselor Prost, hope that's okay. And second by Counselor McGinn, that the committee of hold rise and report. Move her in second, fine? Not ahead, yes?
Yes.
And I don't think we need a vote. All those in favor, if you just want to raise your hand?
Oh, we do need a recorded vote.
Oh, we do need a recorded vote. I tried to rush things along.
We'll do it for consistency purposes. Now that we see everybody, we'll, we'll change it up.
No problem. Thank you.
Counselor Post?
In favor.
Counselor Cunningham?
In favor.
Counselor McGinn?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor.
Counselor Shewski? Oh, sorry. Counselor Gordon?
In favor.
Counselor Downer?
In favor.
Counselor Maine?
In favor.
And Mayor Strether?
In favor.
And that motion is carried.
So that ends the uh committee of the holds, and we move back into the uh formal session for which I have a motion moved by Counselor Gordon and second by Counselor Prost. Uh, just could be a head nod if you're okay with that, please. Perfect, thank you. Uh, that the recommendations of the committee of the hold for the meeting of May twentieth, twenty twenty, be adopted as resolutions of council. I'll answer questions from council. Seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, could call the roll again, please?
Counselor Cunningham?
In favor.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor.
Counselor McGinn?
In favor.
Counselor Post?
In favor.
Counselor Maine?
In favor.
Counselor Gordon?
In favor.
Counselor Downer?
In favor.
And Mayor Strether?
In favor.
And that motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Uh, we have no motions for which notice was given, so we'll move directly to bylaws. I have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, excuse me, seconded by Counselor Maine for the following bylaws. Bylaw twenty twenty dash three two, amended zoning bylaw two zero four dash nine zero. As amended respecting three one nine Jervay Street. Bylaw twenty twenty dash three three, amended procedural bylaw two zero one eight dash six two. As amended permit electronic meetings and including public meetings and deputations during electronic meetings where an emergency has been declared and to repeal bylaw twenty twenty dash two two. Be passed and enacted. I'll answer questions from council. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Okay. Counselor Post, are you in favor or A or N?
In favor.
Thank you. Counselor Cunningham?
In favor.
Counselor McGinn? In favor? Deputy Mayor Ross? Okay. Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor.
Counselor Gordon?
In favor.
Counselor Downer?
In favor.
Counselor Maine?
In favor.
And Mayor Strether?
In favor.
And that motion is carried.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I now have a motion moved by Deputy Mayor Ross and seconded by Counselor Cunningham that bylaw twenty twenty dash three four, being a bylaw to adopt procedure council meeting held May twentieth, twenty twenty, be passed and enacted. I'll answer questions from council. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, so Counselor Cunningham?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Ross?
In favor.
Counselor McGinn? Counselor McGinn?
He disappeared.
Okay, Counselor Post?
In favor.
Counselor Maine?
In favor.
Counselor Gordon?
In favor.
Counselor Downer?
In favor.
And Mayor Strether?
In favor.
And that motion is carried seven to one.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, and finally, I have a motion moved by Counselor Prost, seconded by Counselor Downer that this regular meeting of council adjourn at eight twenty-two PM. And I don't believe I need to call the roll. So with that, council, thank you very much, and staff, thank you very much. To the public, be well, be safe, to all of us, be well and be safe. Well, next, adianto, next time. Night.
Thank you. Good night. Good night, everyone. Right.
Good night.